I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for January 11th, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anton.
Here.
Commissioner Fleet. Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pill.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here, and Chairman Richard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you standing, everybody, you've got to be sworn in if you're going to give any testimony. So if you'd please raise your right hand and say after me, "I swear that every testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God."
Thank you.
Okay? And I would ask that you silence any and all electronic devices. Also, when you come up to the podium, if you would please sign in, we have a sign-in sheet up there. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our November 9th and December 14th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet. Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, the minutes are, as printed, are hereby adopted. Okay, first order of business, planning and zoning item 12-001. Hanku Chen with Shi Hong Gu of Henry Gu and Associates regarding the property located at 137 East 56th Street for the following. Zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a covered porch with a non-conforming front yard setback in ER 3 Single Family Detached Residence District. And item B, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a rear addition with a non-conforming side yard setback in ER 3 Single Family Detached Residence District. If you would, please, sir. And don't forget to sign it, if you would.
Sure. All right, you did.
I apologize if I did not pronounce your name correctly.
Oh, I'm Shi Hong Gu. This is Hanku Chen.
Evening.
He's the owner, and the architect. And as you can see from the drawing we signed in, there's a letter called Finding of Facts for Variants prepared by my company. Basically, for the front of building, the main reason to add the covered porch is for, I guess, for the safety. Because in winter, there's a lot of ice and the snow. They can build up on the concrete slab right at the edge of the entrance, the main entrance. So because, I guess, the grid at the main entrance has a pretty deep slope going down to the garage door. There's about like three foot sloping down. So it becomes very dangerous. You can just slip down to the, you know, very, I guess, three or four feet. As we can see, the previous front building line was 25 feet. So even after we add the front covered porch, we're still beyond the 25 feet line. So that's for the first front of the building variation. For the rear of the building, I guess the main reason for us to add the addition is because the Chen family, they have like three small kids now. When, I guess, when they bought the building, they did not have any kids, but now they have three. So they need the space for the little kids to have activities. That's why they also need space for the new bedroom. And that's the main reason for the addition at the rear. The reason why we apply for the variance is that if we can line up the side of the building, you know, I guess addition with the existing, then the interior look of the whole building will be lined up. Also, there's an electric meter at the rear of the building. If we can line up the addition with the existing building, then we don't have to move the meter. If we have to move the meter, then we have to move, you know, the electric conduits, everything. So that's a lot of expense. And right now, we're at, our addition is at 5.51 feet from the lot line. And the zoning ordinance is requiring six feet. So we're asking less than half a feet of variance. I think that that's the main reason for the second application.
Okay, let me get this straight then, sir. When the house was built, it was built to the existing setbacks of the Village of Westmont at the time?
Yes. Oh, I forgot to mention, when the house was built, there was a five-feet side setback. The previous zoning ordinance has a five-feet side setback and 25-feet front setback requirement. Now, the side setback is six feet, and the front is 35 feet.
Yes. And I agree with you myself that to offset the west side of your home for the new addition, one-half foot.
Yeah.
Would really not make much sense and would not look very architecturally pleasing.
You're right. And also, we have to move the meter. There's an electric meter we have to move if we have to offset the addition from the main building.
Yes, okay. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Shannon, before the commissioners start, do you, does staff have anything?
I don't have much to say on the petition, other than just, you know, to make clear that the new proposed rear addition does exactly match the existing.
Lot coverage is...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Lot coverage was approximately 32 percent where up to 35 would be allowed. So there were no other zoning nonconformities.
Okay.
No engineering concerns with stormwater?
Correct.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
I like the design. I understand getting, coming in and out with the inclement weather and that. And I like the design, and it's...
If you look at your neighbor, your porch will line up exactly with them. So you're not going to be sticking out. You're not going to, you're going to fit right in with the rest of the neighborhood. So I don't have a problem. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Pill.
I like the idea, too. I was out there today, and you look down the block, they all line up on the side. That's, it's the smart thing to do. There's no change, really, in the footprint of the house. It's going to look the same from the front. I wish you luck.
Commissioner Anton.
I agree. Wish you luck.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I was there today, too, and I agree with my fellow commissioners. It's a good idea.
Commissioner Fidesco.
I go by the property all the time, and I know what you're saying about the snow. You know, at times when I've gone by, you know, the wind kind of blows from the north and west. It kind of piles up in front of the house. So I understand. But no, I think it'll be fine, and I agree that it's a safety issue. As far as the side goes, I think it's a great idea to just keep it straight.
Thank you.
No problems.
Actually, you were to be commended. You built even less than what you were allowed to build by increasing your setback. And now, the village has changed the rules on you, so which most certainly is not your fault. And it looks like you're going to have a beautiful addition there, and I wish you most of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, since we have a request for a variance, we need a reading of the findings of fact, if we could?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The house currently encroaches into the front yard setback, and no front porch addition is permissible without a variance. The property cannot yield a reasonable return without this functional and aesthetic improvement. Criteria number two, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. The house was originally built with a then-existing front yard setback, and the applicant did not create this existing nonconformity. The proposed improvement will constitute a functional and aesthetic upgrade to the property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed improvements will provide a better streetscape for the property. The proposed setback is consistent with the setbacks of homes in the surrounding area, and the proposed improvements will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. All right, the findings of fact for a zoning code variance are hereby approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 12-001, item A. A zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a covered front porch with a non-conforming front yard setback in ER 3 Single Family Detached Residence District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
All right. May we have readings of the finding of fact for the side yard?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The existing house contains a 5.5-foot side yard setback. The proposed rear addition to this house will match this existing setback. The addition is placed at this location due to the function and aesthetic concerns, and the applicant could not yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. The house is constructed in conformance with the then-existing side yard setback, and the applicant did not create this existing side yard nonconformity. The applicant will not encroach any further into the side yard setback from existing conditions. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. This modest rear addition to the house will match the existing side yard setback and will not alter the essential character of the area. Lot coverage requirements are being met, and the proposed addition will not create adverse stormwater concerns.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Findings of fact for a side yard variance request are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B. Zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a rear addition with a non-conforming side yard setback in ER 3 Single Family Detached Residence District.
So moved.
Second.
That was Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and Shannon can tell you when you'll go before the Village Board of Trustees. And good luck to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Planning and zoning item 12-002. Michael C. Kaplan of In the Bag Recording Studio with Frank Kudrin regarding the property located at 203 North Cass for the following. A, special use permit request to operate a music school in the B1 Limited Business District.
How you guys doing today? Or tonight? My name is Mike Kaplan. I'm the chief engineer and owner and operator of In the Bag Recording Studio. And I just want to give you a little background on myself. I've been in the business since about 1998. That's when I got out of school, started interning, and got into the recording business. In 2004, we opened a place in Glen Allen. It was our first studio on our own. We were there about a year and a half, or I'm sorry, about a year. And then we moved to Spotten Lombard, an industrial complex, and we were operating there for about seven years. We were at a point where we were looking to expand our business. We were looking around for buildings, and we saw 203 Cass Avenue. It was a perfect fit for us. So that's what brings me here in front of you today. When we started, we started doing more of a focus on local bands and younger bands. Bands that were good enough to really record, but didn't necessarily have the cash to drop on a, you know, a big-name studio. But we still wanted to give them the opportunity to have a professional recording environment. And that's how we started out. And that business model kind of led us to where we are now, of working with bands that don't have a lot of experience in this, and trying to form them into, you know, working musicians, whether that's studio musicians and bands, performers, that kind of thing. So that's kind of where our goal comes from. What we want to do at the new place, as well as what we used to do, which was anything from voiceover work, commercial work, singles, songwriters, bands, everything like that, we want to get a little more focused in this new business to kind of work with bands that have a little more potential, younger bands that really need the guidance to get where they're going. We have, in the business now, we have a couple of guys who have a couple of gold records on their wall, and they're really trying to, they can really aim a band to a specific producer, like if there's a producer in Nashville or LA or something like that, that we know is looking for a certain kind of artist. We can kind of form them to that and try and get them along on their way. And kind of give them the confidence and the know-how and the experience to really be a working musician. Now, when I say this, we're going to be developing talent. We want to do this across the board, no matter where they start from, even if it's cradle to grave. If we have a, we want to do lessons, rehearsals, recording, and publishing. Those would be our main aspects of our business. Now, as far as the development goes, if we start out with a student who doesn't really have a lot of experience, just comes in with some interest to play an instrument, we'd like to take that student, get them well-versed in their instrument enough to start a band with them, maybe take some other people from our other elements, the other lessons, as well as in conjunction with Uncle John's music that has lessons as well. Possibly form bands, get them going. From there, we take them into rehearsal, rehearsal mode, which would be kind of developing the bands on how to perform, how to, you know, put on a show, and how to be a confident performer. So you can't, you're not just pigeonholed in performing onstage at a bar somewhere. You know what I mean? You really can become a good musician, a studio musician, like I mentioned before. As far as the lessons go specifically, when talking to Uncle John's music, we talked about what they offer and what they have. And our last, we don't want to step on anybody's toes. I used to shop at Uncle John's music, and I would like them to, you know, and I'd like to work in conjunction with them. So we found they do guitar and saxophone lessons and stuff of that nature. So we want to focus more on the vocal, keyboard, stuff that they don't offer. We want to work together with them. As well as, since we're right, the building's right next to the school, offer private lessons for orchestra and band instruments as well, to kind of work in conjunction with them. Back to the rehearsal side of things, a lot of bands kind of practice in mom and dad's garage or basement. You know what I mean? And that's all well and good if you're just kind of having some fun with it. But if you're really trying to develop an act and develop talent, you need somebody who's been there and knows what they're doing to kind of help guide that along. And so, as you can see, we're petitioned as a school, and we, so this whole process is education. It's trying to develop young musicians into becoming, you know, professional musicians, somebody who can make a living off of this. So we want to offer coaching available. Like I said, we have producers that have worked with producers in Nashville and et cetera. And we want to help kind of guide them, to focus them to where they want to be, what they want to accomplish. That would be helping with songwriting, arrangements of songs, either stage show. I'm in a band called 1969. We played A Taste of Westmont a couple of years ago. I don't know if you guys remember that. But one of the things about that band is it's not just a bunch of guys onstage playing instruments. It's truly a show. It's a rehearsed show. It has, you know, lights and dances and et cetera to kind of, you know, kind of make it more of, you know, like I said, you can go to any bar and see any band that's kind of just sitting there playing their instruments. We want to get beyond that and really make, draw the talent out of the students. In this rehearsal phase, it prepares them for the next step, which is recording a demo. That would be another service we'd be offering. We'd have two recording studios. The first one, Studio A, would be more for bands and that kind of thing, your typical rock and roll band. And so that would be, and generally, when you record that way, you record what's called track-to-track recording, which is you have everybody kind of lay down a little something to record it down, just so everybody has their place. But from there, you're doing it one at a time. So you're doing, you do a drum track, you get that down. You do a bass track, something to that effect, bass or keyboards, you get that down. And it's all layered up. It's not like we'd be having bands just like kind of jam it all the time. You know what I mean? Our second studio would be more specific towards vocal recording, so voiceover work, commercials, R&B, that kind of thing, things that don't have a lot of instrumentation to them. As well as taking the projects that are ready to move on to like smaller instruments, vocal guitar. We can move that on to keep both our studios working at a time. Now, in the petition, you'll see we have a retail section in there for retail as well. Now, that's a, we don't want to offer, we don't want to offer anything more than accessories, small stuff. Again, Uncle John's music, we want to make sure that they, we can use this to help them out, and they can help us refer artists to us, and we can refer, you know, retail to them as well. And I'm sure when you start talking about music and stuff like that, a big concern of everybody's is going to be soundproofing and what's going to happen with the sound. And I have a small presentation you should have. If you have your packets, there's, this information's all in there as well. But I just kind of want to explain a little bit of how we do that. When a studio is built, you build a box within a box, per se. So none of the walls touch the outside walls. There's generally six to eight inches of space in between walls. And what this does is, the way sound works, you know, it vibrates. It vibrates through the first wall, through the insulation, and then to the second half of drywall, then into the space where it can dissipate before it even hits the outside wall. I wanted to show you a couple of things here, just some of the technical side of it. These are called gene clips. And what they do is they add an extra bit of spacing in between. So you put up a drywall, or a drywall setup, like a frame for a wall. You put channels across, and these clips clip into the channels, and then the wall itself is on this. So now you're talking about, you're talking more to eight to 10 inches of space in between. So that's even an extra soundproofing for us. We didn't want to stop there because we know we're in a downtown area. We want to make it nice and pleasant for everybody and, you know, isolated for ourselves. So I want to show you this as well. This is a little diagram of how the walls are built, as well as another element within the wall. There's, behind the drywall, there's a, it's called maslow vinyl. It's basically like a rubber film, about a quarter-inch rubber film that would go on the wall in between two pieces of drywall. That's another layer that absorbs vibration and doesn't let it get past, doesn't get past the outside of the wall. So you can kind of see that here, how it would be done. You have drywall, or gypsum board, maslow vinyl, sound deadening, which would be the second layer, and then onto these channels like I talked about earlier. Just quickly, I want to show you this, too. When you're, this is called green glue. And what it is, is essentially a separate, it's like an epoxy. You put on the inside of the drywall, and that's another layer of vibration. This is mainly for low-end vibration, low-end vibration bass, low end of piano, that kind of thing. That has a tendency to travel the most. So that's what this specifically is for. This area right here shows that this cuts down into low-end vibrations, and that's usually what transfers more into the street. So, and then this, I just wanted to show you as well. These are, silent seal is basically for all the cracks, all the little spots in between where the drywall meets the floor, the drywall meets itself. You fill this up, and it's a, it's a sound-treated epoxy. It can help out with that as well. Just wanted to go over that. So you see, we had that all taken care of as far as soundproofing goes. And with me, I have blueprints of my old building, if anybody's curious and wants to see those, so you can actually see the spacings in the walls and how the building is built within the building itself. I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Okay, has anybody from the public wished to comment? We'll close the public session. Staff, do you have anything for the commissioners?
Sure. So you can see that the business before us this evening is diverse in its offerings. With the school and the training facility, there will be some back-end office and storage. Again, also some of the retail and recording space. One of the things that did come up for discussion, a significant amount of discussion at EDC, the Economic Development Committee meeting recently, was the soundproofing, which Mr. Kaplan has gone into some great detail on this evening, as far as how that would be handled. Special use requirement goes into whether or not there's going to be appreciable traffic congestion or pedestrian hazard. There's not really a peak hour where they anticipate a great deal of people arriving at the same time. So some will be by vehicle, some will be walking. But it's not at set hours. It kind of rotates. And then there's no Cass Avenue entrance at this point. There's a buffer between...
Yeah, we have no intention of...
Southside door.
Yes.
And the road area there. So the only other thing that I did want to mention is that there appears to be more than adequate parking for the use. Three spaces would be permitted, or required by code. There are 10, I believe, off-street parking spaces. And they anticipate having approximately two employees and eight students present on average at any given time. And there's also, there's additional parking in the public lot and then on the street nearby.
All right, let's start with the commissioners. Commissioner Fidesco, if you would.
I just have one question.
Sure.
It's kind of related to the sound deadening. Have you ever taken a decibel meter and gone outside of your existing studio and taken a measurement at, say, approximately 10, 15 feet from your exterior wall?
I haven't, because honestly, you get 10 feet, 10, 15 feet away, you're not hearing it anymore. And that was with, the old facility had a non-soundproofed door with a garage. So that was, I mean, occasionally, you'd get a little bit out of that because that door wasn't soundproofed. But 10 feet, by the time I got to my car, you couldn't hear it anymore.
Okay. That's pretty much what I was going for.
That's why I wanted to go into detail about this. There's a lot that goes into soundproofing. It's not just throwing up a couple of walls and hoping. You know what I mean? It's a lot of technical, you know...
No, I understand. I just wanted to get that point out there. Years ago, I worked in a television studio, and believe me, you know, you could have a live band in there recording, and you can be 15 feet away and not hear them.
Well, this, this soundproofing will go for every room, every room in the building. So there would be no, I mean, because our main concern, recording, is we can't have bleed from one room to another inside. Let alone that would get outside.
By the sensitive equipment, and it will pick it up. The microphones are, I understand.
Yeah, and if you, I mean, if you wanted me to, I could find out, you know, I mean, if we could find out what the decibels are outside of a general...
I'm sure they're not more than ambient, you know.
No, they're definitely not more than ambient.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I take it you've already had discussions with Uncle John's and how you can work together?
Yes, yes. That was actually the first thing we did, is we went over and talked to them, just because, like I said, I used to shop there. That would be my last thing I ever wanted to do, was, you know, step on their toes in any way.
And how about, have you made any contact with the school, the music department?
This school over here, right next...
The one right behind you?
I have not made contact with them yet.
That is part of your plan, is to try to...
Yes, we do want to talk to them. We want to, anyway, it's, you know, the idea here is there's some music going on, and, you know, with A Taste of Westmont, et cetera, it's a good time, you know, it's a good center, musical center, and it could be. I mean, that's, originally, when we moved into Lombard, it was kind of becoming that, you know? And that's why, that's why we wanted to do that. And we'd kind of want to create that a little bit here in Westmont, so.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Anton.
It seems like you have a well-thought-out plan. I like your sheets on the sound deadening.
I didn't realize you guys had an overhead.
That building does look like a recording studio, too. It's a different kind of building, so I think that fits you, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Spinal Tap, Crazy Parties, oh, invite me. I'm right down the street.
Sounds good.
3M, three blocks down, so.
Have to get your number.
Good luck.
Commissioner Pill.
Very nice presentation, good detail, and I appreciate the extras thrown in since the Economic Development Committee meetings. And that was very interesting. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
What are your hours of operation?
Generally, generally 10 to 8 or so. But it depends on, you know, with, it's a lot of by appointment business when you get into the recording side of it, because people have, you know, nine to fives, and you got to get them in. But again, that's why I wanted to get into the soundproofing. If I'm doing a little bit of overdubbing in a small room in the basement, I want to assure you that that's not getting out to the street. So we're hoping, and in that case, it's usually one or two people there at a time, so.
Now, our next question is probably not anything to do with why we're voting, or what we're voting on. But you're saying that you're helping put bands together and help them write a song or put that song together and that. Do you plan on representing these bands that you put together or helped put together?
We do want to do a little bit as far as promoting them, but we're not, as of right now, we're not management. We do want to talk, we're in talks with a manager to come in and use one of our auxiliary offices. So basically, we would be passing that along to another company. That's, and that's not what we do. We want to concentrate mainly on the development and then get them a steady manager to get them booked and get them out there playing.
Okay. And again, you're not selling things that you're going to be collecting taxes on or anything like that?
Like I said, with the small retail, yes, I'd be, you know, there would be sales tax there, but they, you know...
You did mention...
The small side of the retail would be guitar strings picks, but it wouldn't go beyond that. We want to send them right down the block, is what we want to do. So, but we do want to have some things available... So, but we do want to have some things available for them, so when they need them for their lessons, a lesson book, maybe, you know, that kind of thing. So there's the quickness of just, they grab this one, give us four bucks for this one or whatever. But in general, we want to send them down to Uncle John's. The retail would be a very small aspect.
That's all I got. I might just add that when you're in the basement, and if you happen to see a brace going from the basement floor to the ceiling above, and there's no reason it should be there, it was because when that WaveX hardware was there, that was where the nails were stored in the bins.
That answers some questions.
This is what the previous donor told me.
That's funny. That's, we were very curious about that, actually.
What kind of sound deadening materials are they? Fire-rated?
Oh, yes, all this stuff is fire-rated. And the, on top of this, actually, it's not in my presentation, but you have sound treatment on top of that, which is basically, it doesn't control, it's not soundproofing, but what it does is controls the sound, like points it in certain directions, that kind of thing. And that stuff, all the stuff we had from Lombard, we're still using, and that was all fire. You can, you can hold a match right up to it and it doesn't, doesn't burn, so. That's all. In fact, there's a lot of brands of this stuff. In Orlax, this particular brand is the best one that is actually fire-rated.
And that'll be the, that'll be the inside?
That would be like the inside of the walls, yes. And then, you know, we'd use drywall gypsum board, and it wouldn't be a lot of wood. The only thing wood that would be in there would be the current floor. Oh, and the nail rack.
Building sprinklered by any chance?
No, it's not.
It is not, okay. Then you do, really, you're not going to be generating very much in a way of sales tax revenue?
No, that's not our primary goal.
Okay.
Yes, John, did you?
Just wondering about windows and any of, I'm sure they're not in the recording studios, but what about rehearsal spaces?
Windows are sound's enemy. Glass is very reflective. It doesn't sound good, so we'll be covering. Like on the front of the building, those two windows in the front, they'll have walls in front of them, so they'll just be aesthetic from the outside. But there will be no, the only windows to the outside will be in the office.
It's good to hear. Just speaking from personal experience in downtown Glen Allen, there's a, I think it's a
Velvet Pineapple?
Yeah.
That was where I actually started, and there was no treatment, nothing up there. That thing gets right out to the street.
One or two. I personally
He also opens the windows during sessions, so that's a, that was the first studio we bought into, actually.
I don't mind it, but I know there's some neighbors that don't particularly like it.
And honestly, that was one of the reasons we got it, right next to the fire station with no sound treatment. Every time that alarm would go off, we'd hear it, and it was just, you know, to stop recording, and it was, it was not the most ideal situation.
That was the way the village could get back at you.
Yeah, there you go, right, right? Well, the firemen used to sit outside and, instead of lean on their trucks and listen to music. But like I said, not sound-treated. That was just a room, and we hung a couple of carpets on the wall, and that was, that was then there. And I'm sure that's the way it is now as well.
Any further commissioner comments?
I just wonder how long, if you are given approval by the village board, how long it will take you to be up and going?
Well, it really depends on how much, how long it'll take to do the improvements. I'm thinking two weeks or so to get the main room built, and that would be when we wanted to start working. We have, since I, since I was in business, we actually, we're currently non-business. We just closed the other place due to the end of our lease. We didn't want to just pay month-to-month on it. So we, the, we have clients chomping at the bit to get in. So I am ready to build those, especially the rehearsal rooms, get those done first in the primary recording studio. And like I said, about two weeks just for the construction, and we're ready to go.
No further comments? Okay, but we have a reading of the findings of fact for a special use, please?
Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted completely indoors. Adequate soundproofing will be provided. The proposed use will not emit any adverse noise, light, odors, or vibrations, and therefore will not endanger the public health and general welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will take place within an existing enclosed building and not, will not admit adverse noise. Adequate off-street parking is available and class sizes will be small. Accordingly, the proposed use will not impair property values within the neighborhood. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties within the central business district are fully developed, and this proposed use within an existing building will not impede future development of the surrounding area. Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. This existing building is currently served by adequate utilities and other facilities, including off-street parking. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The number of students and instructors present on the property at any one time will be limited, thereby minimizing traffic congestion in the public streets. Adequate off-street parking on the property is available, and the property is within close proximity to public transportation. Criteria number six, that the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances are sought by the applicant for this proposed use, as it will occupy an existing building, and the proposed use otherwise conforms to all village regulations and ordinances. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number two. The proposed use will not generate appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. There is no entrance to the facility on Cass Avenue, and instead, the entrance is located on the south wall of the building, away from the public right-of-way, and is further protected by a planted four-foot buffer. Adequate off-street parking exists for this use. The number of students and instructors utilizing the property at any one time will be limited.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 12-002. A special use permit request to operate a music school in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Anton. A question on the motion? May we have roll call?
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, but that's all it is, a recommendation, but first step.
Great, thank you.
And Shannon can tell you when you go before the committee of the holder?
Thank you.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Eddie? Shannon?
I have one item of business. I just wanted to remind the residents that may be viewing the meeting at home that next Thursday, the 19th, will be a community meeting. This is our comprehensive plan workshop. The meeting will be taking place at 7:00 PM, and that will be at the Park District Administration Office at 55 East Richmond. That will be in the Linden Room there, and all members of the public are invited to attend. It should be a pretty engaging exercise where there will be some small group and large group activities. But this is the residents' opportunity to weigh in and help envision the next 15 to 20 years for the village. So again, that's next Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00 PM at the Park District Facility at 55 East Richmond.
Any commissioners have any comments, anything? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.